Right, it is 4:01. I will call to order the Wednesday, June 25th, 2025 City of Battle Creek Planning Commission meeting. Can we get a roll call for attendance, please?
Commissioner Hughes?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Godfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Commissioner Dennison?
Here.
Commissioner Moten? Commissioner White?
Here.
Mayor Binkie?
Here.
Good deal. All right, on to approval of minutes, this being the May 28th, 2025 meeting. Are there any comments or questions regarding the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the minutes be approved as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, those signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Minutes approved. Correspondence, we did receive written correspondence. All commissioners should have a copy of this. We appreciate those who have taken the time to provide feedback, and it'll be considered during part of the deliberations this evening. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No additions or deletions.
Thank you. We now proceed to the public hearings and deliberations, which we do have one public hearing this afternoon. Before doing so, I will declare a conflict on myself. I am employed by BCU who administers the Tifa, which is the applicant. So I myself, as chair, will be recusing from that part of the meeting. Our vice chair, O'Donnell, will be leading it. So, public, applicant, other commissioners, address O'Donnell at that time. Alana?
And I also am abstaining because of a conflict of interest.
All right. So at this time, I will hand it over to Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open for the rezoning request of RPZ 25002. Is there any citizens that would like to speak right now? Yes, in the back. Oh, staff, I'm sorry, there gotta be a staff presentation first.
I've submitted some questions, but I...
Yep, we'll get to you in a second. I took it out of order. Staff presentation first.
So, as has already been stated, this is an application from the BC Tifa regarding a handful of properties owned by BCU, generally bounded by Columbia Avenue to the north, Stone Jug Road to the west, and Helmer Road to the east. Goal is just to keep this pretty short. The applicant is actually here to present today. But in short, what a conditional rezoning allows is for an applicant to voluntarily bring conditions that they would attach to a rezoning of a property. Those conditions can come in a number of different forms. They can be conditions specific to an individual use and an applicant's proposing. They can also be two-dimensional requirements. They can be specific to buffering and landscaping. Really, anything that the applicant deems could be beneficial to the greater community as a part of their application. That is what the applicant is bringing before you today. Staff, based on our analysis and findings, and based on the criteria listed in Section 1281.01-G5, recommends approval of this item. Otherwise, I will turn it over to the applicant to present.
Thank you. Yep, if the applicant could please speak. I'm sorry, I was out of order a second ago. I'm used to the city commission where the public speaks first before the applicant.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for taking time to consider this today. So, I kinda wanted to start with how we got here and some of the activity that we've done thus far, but I'm Joe Silveralsky.
There you go. Yep, tell us your job. Thank you.
I'm Joe Silveralsky. I represent Battle Creek Unlimited, and also, which is the administrator for the Battle Creek Tax Increment Finance Authority, one of the landowners, and we also represent West Michigan Land Holding. So this is a joint application between the BC Tifa and West Michigan Land Holding. West Michigan Land Holding, for full disclosure, is an entity of Battle Creek Unlimited. Address is 4950 West Dickman Road, Suite 1, Battle Creek, Michigan, 49037. All right, thank you. It's been a while. So I wanted to start with a little bit of how we got here. So what we have on the screen is kinda how we got here. So, the light purple is land that is already under control by the BC Tifa on your left side, and that is the current zoning as well. That is light industrial. Our main section there towards the north of, on the north, towards Columbia is approximately 60 acres. The sliver to the left is owned by R&amp;L Carriers, which I believe is getting ready to be developed. And then, if you go a little further south, there is a strip of green, or excuse me, there's the purple and the green. We own the purple section, which is already currently zoned, light industrial. The section to the right, which it looks like four farm field pieces, is approximately 60 acres, which is zoned agriculture. There is nobody actively looking at this site. We are doing this to be prepared for the future, and we are marketing, we wanna market this as one of Battle Creek's kinda last and premier light industrial sites. And we're talking clean industrial. We're talking about something like food manufacturing. We're not looking for, you know, a battery facility or tire recycling. We're going to hold and covet this for high, highest and best use, harmonious with the area. Now, as we started to assemble this, we do understand that there's some, there's some very nice neighborhoods to the south there. So, we took an approach to put together some concepts of how can we assemble this, achieve what the community needs, housing, achieve preparation for a nice marketable site, and also try to be cognizant that there's neighborhoods to the south there and make something harmonious. So, the image that you see to the right was one concept. I will pause. We did a preliminary outreach on April 24th and 29th. We did two different sessions to, we mailed out to over 300 residences in parcels in that general area, which we didn't have to do, but we did to present this same, these same concepts to get some feedback. So, what you're seeing on the screen is not what we're landing on, but I wanna explain how we got there. So, during these sessions, on April 24th from 2:00 to 5:00, we had approximately 17 residences up here. And April 29th from 5:00 to 7:00, so we did it during the day, and we also did it during the evening, and we also had approximately 17 individuals show up as well. So, the first concept is your image to the right, where we thought maybe we would put a road through to prevent further, further encroachment on the neighborhoods, and then try to market that as residential development. Next slide, please. And this further kinda shows what that looks like. That would be approximately 90 lots. And then over to your right, we were, we've proposed a multifamily development. Multifamily could mean anything from apartments, townhomes, condos. Again, on Helmer Road, trying to bookend the industrial, because we know that there's been concern with traffic on Helmer. So, taking into account needing additional residential, but buffering that in, so no industrial development. You know, a large user came and said, hey, we wanna put a, an entrance there. That makes us really impossible when we start to market that. Next slide, please. So that's, that's concept one. Concept two, image to your left is still the original zoning as is. To the right is concept two, which is basically just creating a bunch of green space, buffer space, and also showing the multifamily residential. So next slide, please. This kinda gives you an idea. There's a lot of acreage there on the green, what we were calling it, preservation to create buffer. And you see berms, and you see a walking trail. So, really trying to create that, we wanna get to that 120, 125 acre parcel, but create some buffer between the neighborhoods. And really, that site, and I'll show you later, is part of our conditional rezone request, talks about developing an elevation so that if you're living in Jacaronda, and the site is here, and we've buffered some more, what's your line of sight gonna be? And really trying to take into account, hey, we're gonna limit such a facility at, I'm making numbers up here, but it's in our application, at 45 feet, so there is no sightline. But should they need to go to 50, they have to take the site down further to accommodate. So, taking those items into consideration. So this was concept two, and this was shown with, with everybody at the meetings. And everybody really liked the buffering and the potential for trails and all of that good stuff. So, I'm gonna go on to, next slide, please. This, this kinda talks about the sightline thing. It's very hard to see on the screen, but on the bottom, all the way to the left would be, you know, if you were in Jacaronda, and the red line shows kind of a sightline, so, and it shows some buffering and mounting. We're talking about putting mounds up of, you know, potentially 20 feet and putting vegetation on top of those. And then you still have the site that's, that's got some elevation difference. Next slide, please. So this is after those two meetings, we went back to the drawing board and came up with kind of a compromise between the two. And this is what we have in front of you today as an application. So, we still have the multifamily to your right. We've shrunk it down, and we have added buffer in between. We've kept the buffer along the, the bottom there, which is, I think it's over 300 feet. It shows about approximately 300 feet, but that's approximately 27 acres. We squared off the light industrial, and we, we, instead of making all that green space, we talked about putting, or we're proposing putting in single-family residential. And some of the comments where there were, what kind of residential units? We're talking market rate. We're talking, you know, smaller, you know, 1,300 to maybe up to upwards of 1,700 square foot, trying to get in that price range, which we think we're seeing. Again, no development is planned there. This is just the first phase. There's no developer looking at doing anything tomorrow. So this is what we landed on. Next slide. If less, that's the last slide.
That was the last slide.
Okay. Just some of the comments of these outreach sessions, concerns over apartments lowering home values. We're talking about only market rate housing will be proposed, buffering and screening will be added. Concerns over low-income housing. We're proposing, we're trying to market this, no subsidized housing, quality design and management. Single-family homes being too small, devaluing. The market's just not there for the, you know, the 2,500 square foot homes. But again, these are market rate, 1,300 to 1,600 square foot, somewheres upwards of 1,700 square feet. Helmer Road, some other things we talked about, we heard was traffic. So, one of the reasons we took the road away, 'cause it was a very good point, and I think there's a couple individuals here that were at these meetings, was creating a thoroughfare through there. You know, if you've got the high school, and when traffic lets out, what's that gonna do? Okay, that makes sense, so that's why we eliminated the road. But there was also concern about traffic at Columbia and Helmer, you know, should a development go in at the light industrial site? And we talked about how depending on the development, the MEDC does provide tools and incentives based upon jobs. That's something that could be explored if somebody were to land there to maybe see how that intersection could be changed. There's, there's lots of dollars that can come with depending on the size of the development. Airport, airport, we, we heard about noise on Stone Jug. So, we've talked about actually doing some preliminary or extra buffering, maybe behind R&amp;L, and, and kind of turning and going along that residential area. It's not gonna fully take care of the noise, but we wanna be a little bit proactive based upon some of these concerns we've heard. Industrial, majority support it, but want it limited. So, again, we're talking about putting covenants on this site so that if the site isn't developed in 10 years or whatever, it lives beyond me, right? I'm, I'm not, I might not be here in 10 years, but we wanna make sure this site is Battle Creek's highest and best use and coveted towards the best use. No dirty heavy industrial. We used food manufacturing as an example. Green space, I think we heard that we liked the support for the walk path, the buffers. So we've got that all in our, our application. No solar farms, none will be proposed. That's in kind of the covenants. But that's generally it. We, we did a lot of due diligence ahead of this. I know there are some folks here that were there. Some may be in support, some may not be in support, but I think we went the extra mile here to, to kinda create a compromise and set this forward in the right direction. Happy to answer any questions. I don't know if that's time right now, but...
If we have some questions, we'll get to you on that.
Call me back up, or, okay, thank you.
Okay, now we will do a public comment. When you please come to the microphone, please state your name and address before speaking.
Good afternoon, commissioners, staff members, mayor. My name is Stan Richards. I'm with R&amp;L Carriers, address is 600 Gillum Road, Wilmington, Ohio 45177. I, we're not opposed to the project at all or development. We applaud that effort. We're very pro-development. Our portfolio is much more expanded than just trucking across the United States, although we have 140 service centers across the United States. We have restaurants, shopping centers, retail, industrial, you name it, we've got it. So we applaud the effort here. Our only concern is this, oftentimes, when we have an existing facility, such as ours right there, and if residential comes in close by, there is a concern that we're not allowed to expand our property. So we wanna just preserve our right to expand in the future. We have one expansion going on right now with some lot improvement and shop, and we wanna look, and preserve our right to expand the dock as well in the future. So, that's the only comments that I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon, commission. I am Rachel Knight. I live at 20...
Come closer to the microphone, please.
I live at 208 Kensington Circle. On the map specifically, my property line would be affected as it is part of the tree line from which the proposed line, as far as a walking path, would be incurred in this. My position as to this is, the concerns I have is that these plans keep changing. As indicated earlier in April, we were given one set of plans. Now it's changed again. The houses that I live in specifically, the Kensington's are commonly referred to as the starter homes. Most of the houses there start approximately 1,500 or 1,800 square feet. The proposed homes that are recommended to going in at the diagram as indicated clearly are smaller, and I do believe would affect property values, and that is a concern I have. I further note, in this diagram, the latest one, I do have concerns specifically as to the multi, I guess you could say apartment potential or condo buildings going up. Helmer Road is very congested, especially with the high school in that area. I have concerns as to the road repair, especially just even on Stone Jug. It's marked several areas that people have marked regards to that. My other concern that I have in this matter is the light industrial plan that goes in. I understand that they're waiting for a person to come forward. However, I do note that there's going to be more road traffic, obviously. I, by analogy, would argue in this case, I look at Clemmons Meatpacking down in Coldwater. They had to do several things to ensure that the locals in that area had the appropriate roads, financing, things of that nature. And at this point, my concern is, while we have ideas, it seems to keep changing. I was not at the last meeting in April. I will concede that. However, the plans were shown to me by a neighbor who also lives next door to me, and my concern is that we keep coming here, getting different plans each time. And I do hope that eventually something is settled on. I myself prefer the second plan, that being the walking paths and things of that nature, as I don't want my property values to basically digress. So those are my concerns. I prefer the second plan 'cause of the housing concerns that I've raised. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lisa Carey. I wondered if the applicant is willing to continue engaging with the neighborhood throughout the project's development.
Yep.
Is that something that we, we can be assured of?
Just, just go ahead and ask. We can ask him after, we can bring him up afterwards. Go ahead and ask your questions to us.
Okay. And then the other question is, are you planning a sound study to determine the amount of sound pollution due to Duncan Aviation, Western's Flight School, and the airport? Those of us on the west side of Stone Jug Road, I'm not sure if any of us were aware of those meetings that were held. So, but perhaps, it may have, you weren't?
No.
Okay. So that was something that we, this all came as a surprise to us. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments.
My name is Percy Bean. I live at one thirty-six Abington Circle, and I also have property on Stone Jug, uh, to the, uh, west of this proposal. Uh, I'm in agreement with the proposal. Um, I was born and raised here in Battle Creek, and I have seen it go through many stages, uh, good and bad. And, uh, when I was presented this proposal, uh, I liked the idea of the buffer, I liked that it was restricted to light industrial, and I understand that being a developer, I have developed, um, seven franchises from the ground up, uh, strip centers and, and working on an apartment building now, and some other investments that I have done in it. And sometimes plans do change, and, um, this is one that, uh, once we nail it down and it looks like it's just about finalized, that I think it'd be an asset to our community. Also, when you're looking at Columbia here, you have access to I ninety-four, um, taking Columbia out also by Helmer Road. Uh, I, like I said, I have a nice home at one thirty-six Abington Circle, and I'm also worried about the value of my home, but I don't think that it will drop any. Plus, we have a, uh, some land at, uh, on Stone Jug that we're looking to develop, uh, sooner than later. Uh, I like the idea personally of the, uh, apartments, but I will say that we would like to look at what type of apartments are going in there. Uh, that is a concern, I understand that, but I, I think this is a great project, and I am in support of it.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Debbie Kimber, and I live at one ninety Kensington Circle. Um, my house is in all those drawings up there. Anyways, one question I had was, how big is that buffer zone?
Well, we can ask him what-
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet?
Yes.
Okay. Um, also, as far as residential in the yellow area, I assume that's the residential area?
Mm-hmm.
My question is, they took out all those houses on, on Stevens Road because of the airport? Are they gonna run into the same problem in that area?
Okay, just keep, just keep asking. We have discussion-
Okay, I don't get answers.
When you're all done, when you're all done, we have discussion, so...
Okay. I'm a little concerned about the multifamily, um, housing there. I also, but I, the developer said that it would not be subsidized housing, so I feel a little better about that. Uh, the light industrial is pretty close to the residences there, even with a three hundred foot buffer. Um, I had another question. Oh, I wanna make sure that you're not gonna put a marijuana grow facility in there. Sorry, but I saw in the definition of the light industrial that there was some approved areas for marijuana dispensaries and stuff. I'm not disputing that, I'm not arguing that, but I wanna make sure there's not gonna be a grow operation in, in that area, 'cause it's also agricultural still, so, some of it's still agriculture. Okay?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Good afternoon. I'm Annie Stettler, sixty-nine East Langley. Percy just did such an awesome job speaking, I mirror everything he says. So I, am I in favor of this? Absolutely, we need to build a better Battle Creek, and I do think everything Percy said had a lot to, it was good communication, thank you, so...
Can I have one other thing, Annie? I, I know you spoke earlier about this, so I, I thank you for your help in the community, trying to, uh, better our community.
Oh, yeah, I'm try, I'm trying.
Yep.
Hi, excuse me, my name is Sally, and this is Joe Texera, and we're at one five one one nine Stone Jug Road. Uh, first thing I'd like to say is I knew nothing about these plans in April, and if you are sitting in my front yard, you're gonna look a little bit to the left, and that's where everything's going. And I knew nothing about this. This completely took me by surprise, because right now, the noise from the truck place all night long, if our windows are open, you hear the trucks banging into the docks all night long. You hear Duncan Aviation up to eleven o'clock at night rubbing the engines that they're working on on the planes. Um, the airport, when they put in the new runway, those planes, and they're all mostly the Western Michigan School, they go right over my property. You can't even speak when they're going overhead, it's so close. My concern is, I don't think anybody who's gonna move into that housing is gonna be happy with all the noise that's going on there. I mean, it's, you know... I mean, this is directly across, I'm concerned about the traffic, I'm concerned about, um, the speed that people come over, and I'm, I'm right at the top of a hill that goes down in, into this area. The cars are flying down there fifty and sixty miles an hour half the time. We can't even use one of our driveways, 'cause you take your life in your hands, and that's not well-patrolled at all. We complained many times, I've called the police many times about the speed that people are traveling on that road even though it's thirty-five miles an hour. Thirty-five. Um, also, I'd like to also bring up at, um, Columbia and Stone Jug, that you take your life in your hands, because it is like a blind corner coming from the one side. It's fifty-five miles an hour. If you don't see someone when you first look and you head out, they could be practically right up on top of you. And then also, there's, um, when I would come home from work, and I would get in the turn lane to turn onto Stone Jug, that's also the same turn lane that they're coming into, um, excuse me, for turning into the road that goes down Duncan Aviation. So many times, we are like head-on right there, they're coming at fifty-five miles an hour, and I'm, I'm at a, at a standstill, trying to turn onto, left onto Stone Jug, so, that's been a concern for a long time. We've reached out, you know, and haven't had any satisfaction on that. I am very disturbed that we weren't contacted. I feel like I'm the closest person there is to this, and we, we heard nothing, we were told nothing. So this is just gonna add extra travel on the roads, and our road now, our paving, is we get stone, and then we get a little bit of oil, and then they let us drive back and forth over the top of it. That's how our road is maintained right now on Stone Jug. We've been out there over forty-two years in the same property. So, those are basically my concerns. Oh, my husband has a couple as well, sorry.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, um, the airport-
Go ahead and give your name too, sir.
Joe Texera.
Okay, thank you.
This is my wife. Um, she's correct, we're right across from that yellow section there. We see a lot of traffic go down that road. A lot of people are walking for exercise, riding a bike, taking their dog for a walk, and you're almost getting hit. There is no concern about the speed. We, like she said, we voiced our opinion. It used to be, it used to have a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit sign at the end, at the start of Stone Jug. It's been removed, so has the no truck sign, and we have semi-trucks coming down there in a residential area, which is not. The airport built a berm where they do the engine run-up, does not help. We, we, uh, when they bought the houses on Stevens, or, you know, tore them down because of the noise abatement, we were right at the edge of it, so we did not get offered that. Since then, we have put soundproof roofing in, soundproof windows, we've had our walls foamed with insulation, does not help. You still hear the engines run up, you hear Duncan, or, uh, the, R and L trucking, when they back into the dock, or they're backing into trailers, they slam in, and you can echo it all the way up to our house. And this is going on midnight and a little bit after midnight. The smell, if the wind is coming out of the northwest, you can smell the kerosene, you can't even walk outside because of the kerosene smell from the exhaust of the engines. Again, I, I think people moving into that yellow section are gonna be very upset with what they find. Even a berm put between R and L and that residential is not going to help. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Beam. Um, I'm at one five one five zero South Helmer Road, I'm with Jake Way Realtors, so, um, housing is a good thing. Um, we certainly can use more housing in, uh, Battle Creek, so, uh, glad to hear that at least it's on the table and y'all are, um, considering it. Um, a couple of questions, though, or at least considerations, is, uh, the traffic on Helmer, of course, um, since we are right next to the high school, we do see, um, that traffic jam up. Kids don't ride the school bus anymore, so, uh, parents are there lined up, and it does get a little crazy, so with a multifamily, uh, right there, just curious of, um, you know, how to handle that traffic flow, um, and maybe what the maximum number of units, um, are going to be allowed in the covenants, um, or the, you know, the city would allow for a proposal. I mean, I, I understand that it's gonna depend upon, you know, the developer and, um, you know, the type of units they're gonna put in, but what would be the max? What would you guys cap it at? Um, uh, would be one question, uh, for you, um, as well as, um, I guess just in general, um, it, we, as Realtors can certainly help, um, so if you guys need to employ us, um, not for a charge, but just in the sense of service, to be able to provide estimates to, um, either validate or squash the concerns of property values and how that might impact by adding the smaller units next door, um, because we do understand that concept. I mean, we really do, um, appreciate, um, seeing, you know, the changes and how a new development might or might not impact, um, housing values as people think. So, um, if at any point that you all need, um, assistance with that, we would be happy to provide some data, um, to help clarify too, if that helps make some deciding, um, factors for you all. So, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Lori Van Reiswick, I live at one seven three Jackaranda Drive, and I guess we kinda have the same concerns as we've talked about in the neighborhood as everyone else, property values. As it is, you can barely get out of Helmer Road, out of Jackaranda, onto Helmer Road, especially when school's there, there's only one way in and out of our subdivision, and we've already had the senior centers to the right of us, everything going south, that's basically in some people's backyards as it is, and now we're coming the other way. We live in the back, it used to be called Jackaranda Woods, and now, so that will directly impact us in the back of it there. We've already watched Hennington Hills come in and that whole thing beyond there. And our concerns are the same as everyone else, is our property value gonna go down? We've been there a long time, we already have the flight school with the planes over there waiting for some child to crash into our homes every day, and they do, they have night flights all night long, and that's all you hear, you can sorta hear the trucking from where we're at, we have Fort Custer blasting all the time. And, you know, when we came in, it was hot air balloons in the airport, now we got four days where you can't even be home because of air shows. And again, that's all good for Battle Creek, not great from where we're at. And so, as it stands, we're not thrilled, but what we'd really like to know is, if we're gonna know, I know that no one has proposed anything as far as coming in right now. Are we gonna have some idea of what's gonna happen? A timeline, if somebody does get approached, is anyone gonna tell us as citizens? 'Cause we did not receive a mailing at our home, but I know other people in our neighborhood did receive some. And whether or not we're gonna have some idea of what's gonna happen, so we can either get out, or make decisions about where, you know, what we should be doing to prepare ourselves, or whether we do wanna prepare ourselves, or whether we have some say if we don't like what happens. And so that's just kinda where we're at, and I'm here alone, but speaking for quite a few people in Jackaranda, we all just happen to be working most of the time. So, that's, um, our questions that we would like to have answered, and we would like to know if there's gonna be more community input at some point, if anyone does approach and say that they would perhaps like to build. We're very, very concerned about the apartment complex, or whatever it is. Two, subsidized housing. Small housing might be one thing, you know, single-family home, that's not gonna do the traffic, that's gonna have a little more stability than somebody just coming and going. And we're worried about crime, anything like that that can happen, 'cause we've all seen what happened with Oak Brook, used to be beautiful, and we've seen what happened there. So, we just have concerns and about, we're getting encroached on in all angles, and we would like to have some say into whether or not we can maintain our homes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at the public hearing here for public comment? One last time, is there anybody else that would like to speak in public comment for the public hearing? Okay? Uh, commission comments? Anybody like to speak? Commissioner Godfrey?
I have a question for Joe. On the extreme southern part of this, of the, uh, walking area in, uh, my, in dark green-
Yep.
Is that, is that an area that's going to be open to the public, or is that...
I think, uh, what we did is we took that trail and we took it out to, to Helmer, so theoretically, yeah, somebody could get on that trail there.
And where's parking?
Well, there, there is none, no. It would, it would connect to, yeah.
Someone take the sidewalk and then walk on the trail.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other commissioners that would like to comment at this time? Commissioner Gregg?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, um, and giving their comments and questions. Um, I had some clarifying questions probably for Joe and some others, uh, starting with the notices I did hear on a couple of occasions, that, um, the public meetings that occur that you outlined, um, not everyone received it. Can you just clarify for everyone, um, the, the radius and how you guys came to the three hundred that went out, uh, so that that is, um, more clear?
Yeah, we, we, uh, followed, uh, the, so, this meeting here is if your property touches within a three hundred foot radius. So we, we kinda followed that from the early on, when whatever the city provided us is what we mailed out. Um, there was no intent to leave, you know, certain, certain people out, um, but that's what we did.
Thank you for clarifying. Um, I also, uh, heard about the, the brown area as far as the multifamily homes, um, perhaps those would be apartments, um, but I also heard from Joe when he was giving kind of the overview, um, that you really haven't landed on anything. It could be condos, it could be duplex, it could be, um, apartments. Um, so that is not nailed, nailed down, just the zoning part.
That is correct, and the, the zoning would default to whatever the density is in, in the city's, you know, current zoning, so it could be townhomes, condos, uh, apartments, those types of things, it's just whatever fits within that definition.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, there was also a question about, um, going forward, uh, oh, let me back up. You kind of took us through, um, map one, map two, and receiving the feedback from those public meetings, and landing on this, um, uh, plan, revised plan based on that feedback. And so I see that more as really taking into effect what you're hearing and, um, trying to incorporate, um, that feedback into, uh, this future development. And so I, I do appreciate that, uh, so if, if it seems like things are changing, I think as Mr. Bean mentioned, um, as, as more input is given, those changes could occur. However, this is what we are looking at and what this commission is, is considering today. Um, in doing so, and, and knowing that, um, BCU is very conscious of the public comments around this development, can you address that at all? Is there any, um, plans for continued community outreach as this plan develops?
So, I'm gonna rely a little bit on the planning staff, but, uh, for instance, I'm gonna use scenarios here. There was asked if there was continued engagement. Our next step is to come up with, uh, a set of covenants for the industrial site, and I, I think it was Mr. Peavy? Yeah, he asked us during the thing. Uh, we don't have anything yet down on paper, but that would be, that would be step one. Absolutely, we would work with the, or it's like, maybe go to them and say, this is what we're thinking, these are the uses, 'cause I know Clemmons was used. I'm not interested in having a slaughterhouse when I say food. So, getting really defined on what uses we would all agree to that are highest and best use on the light industrial side, and coveting that site. So, working with the residents there, absolutely. Now, there's gonna be, there's already some height restrictions and things incorporated into this, um, conditional rezone. Um, but, correct me if I'm wrong, on the planning side, if a single-family residential developer came in or a multifamily, even though that's zoned properly, they still would have to come before the plant- come before the planning commission correctly, correct? Not positive on that.
Based on, based on what, what's here, if, if this were conditionally rezoned and a developer came with a proposal to simply construct single-family residences that are within the density allowance of the R1, I believe, of the R1A zoning district, that would be a use by right at that point. So at that point, there's going to be no additional public hearing, no additional, no special use permit, nothing like that. That would have to be.
But there is a process that they have to follow, but there's no notification?
They, there would not, yeah, there would not be notification, there'd be no additional public hearing. They would be subject to the same zoning review that any, that any applicant applying for a permit would be subject to at that point.
Okay. If I may, there was one point that Commissioner Godfrey asked about a parking lot.
Yes.
We didn't really put that there because I'm assuming, and maybe I'm assuming wrong, that the neighborhood doesn't want a parking lot for people to park at and start walking back there. So we're not really calling it out that it's a place to go walk. That was, that was really the intent.
Thank you. And my final observation in, in hearing from everyone today was, I believe, one of the residents talked about a blind spot, I believe on Stone Jug, and some concerns over time about signage and speeding and all those kinds of things. So I thought that might be a good opportunity as this develops. Or if people see that in their neighborhood now, something that I think they were saying that they have been complaining about and these concerns long-term and have been unsuccessful, they felt, in being heard. Can you maybe just give a quick update on how, you know, for this property going forward, if those kinds of concerns are part of it, how people would engage with the city to find resolve?
So concerned with traffic, we can certainly work with the Department of Public Works and engineering to see if, if they have any suggestions for that area or to take a look at any feedback that they may have already received in the past regarding that, that, I mean, that would be my recommendation. It's, it's not necessarily, it's not directly a planning-related matter, but certainly it does, I mean, it does potentially impact any development in that area, so.
Thank you. I have no further questions right now. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? I just have, I have a few, Joe. So talking about that walking path, who would be maintaining the walking path? As in, is it going to be concrete, natural?
I, I would assume it would be an asphalt paved portion. And the way the conditional rezone is written is, you know, that wouldn't go in until a development occurred on the light industrial. Now, we also wrote in the conditional rezone that we may start trying to buffer sooner rather than later, you know, putting the berms in, allowing vegetation to establish just, so who would maintain it? My hopes is, we, my hopes are that we could maybe work with the city and somehow transfer that into a, some sort of preservation. I think there's something further down on Helmer towards 94 and, and put it in a system like that. I don't have the answer to that, but the development would put it in upon an industrial user going in.
Okay, I just like, I just think about the future concern, same with the parking situation and things like that. It's, I believe you're talking, there's a park further down by the church?
Yeah, yeah.
That the city maintains right now currently?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if the city would be wanting to do that or would want to have that added, but I do like the idea of that green space, the law separation of that light industrial. So I keep working on that. Earlier, and you mentioned this, the harmonious part of the area definitely would be hard to put solar and something like that. We don't want that. Same with the marijuana facility smell. But would there be an environmental study, maybe this is staff, would there be some type of environmental study and that would be done, but when we know what type of business would go on in there to make sure it is harmonious with the, the build?
I, I might be able to answer that. That would be kind of when we're going back to the covenants, we're going to kind of narrow down the scope of, of what we think should go in there and that's harmonious. But I can tell you that any company that's going to look at that is also going to look at the same concerns that we just looked at about being harmonious. And I mean, the gentleman at RNL talked about it pretty well. Companies don't want to be a burden to the neighbors. So when you, I don't know what kind of environment you're talking about, like noise pollution.
Yeah, like an environmental study, like if you put this here, is it going to affect the water? Is it going to affect the noise, the, the land, the wildlife, that type of thing?
Absolutely, yes. And we've already done some phase one, phase two, geotechnical, endangered species, wetland. We've done all of that kind of preliminarily and it's, it's a pretty solid site.
Well, the other study was like the airport too, same with the, is it, it doesn't, none of that falls within the airport landing facility or any?
There is actually, right now, that left corner of the purple, there is a, because of that parallel runway, there is some height restriction there. So that, that, and again, that's another thing that affects the height in that area. So there are some height restrictions there because of the airport.
Okay, so certain businesses that would be super high wouldn't be able to?
Yeah, you're not getting a 200-foot tower anywhere near, yeah.
Okay. The other thing is, is like, would cell towers or anything like that be able to be built in that area?
That, I would put that in our covenants that, no, we don't want that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Last chance, anybody else have any more comments for the public hearing? All right, I declare the public hearing completed. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, then, I have a procedural question to ask the staff and the commission. This is coming before us as a petition, PRZ 25-0002. And yet this single petition incorporates five actions. How do you want us to address this? Do you want us to address this as a single petition? Or do you want us to take the five apart and approve them individually?
My... I guess I'd be curious maybe to first hear, I guess, what the commission's general feeling is, if, if there's any additional discussion, because that may help to inform sort of what the best way forward may be. And then I may also lean on the city attorney a little to see what the potential, what the, what the best procedural path is as far as motions. Does that make sense? I, I guess my, what I would, like I said, what I wonder is if there's discussion amongst commissioners regarding the proposal, if that potentially, if there's concern about one specific area versus the entirety of it, I don't, I don't know if that maybe helps kind of inform how we go about it. Does that make sense or?
Well, on, on page three of our, we have five specific areas that you're asking us to consider under one request. So I tend to like to pull them apart so that we know specifically how the planning commission reacted to each individual. But if you want the entire thing considered under a blanket, then, then we need to be told that.
As far as the agenda item is concerned, for the petition itself, you would need to consider what was submitted, which is the five different rezones under one single discussion and one single vote. There wouldn't be, as far as what's on the agenda, there would not be the opportunity to kind of pick that apart and then vote on or discuss each individual. You want to treat that as one harmonious petition for purposes of your discussion and voting today. Whether or not you end up wanting additional details for each one of these proposals, that can be considered as part of your discussion underneath the umbrella of that petition. So there's nothing that's stopping you from focusing on one particular facet of the petition or not, but for purposes of your, your action item today, you do want to consider that as one action item, even though there are those five subparts.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
That too would be my preference. It is one rezoning request and if there are certain pieces of, of the five, one of the five or two of the five that need additional comments or conditions or what have you, that we clearly state which one that is so that that's part of the discussion.
So do we want to break it up into five different, is, we don't, I think it's fine as one package?
Well, I think we need to then discuss if we're going to have a discussion, each one of the five under, under the heading of the, of the general request. Like the very first listing on page three of parcel 006600470-0. It doesn't look like there's any action that needs to be taken because it says that there's no change to that parcel. So I think we just strike that parcel as no action necessary.
Again, that to me is discussing each parcel individually and I do not feel we need to do that individually. That's, that's just me. I'm waiting to hear from everyone else. I think that's what the attorney was saying as well.
We, we would not want to strike individual aspects of it just because though, and you make a good point with that particular parcel, perhaps there's no discussion that needs to take place by this commission. But as far as deciding whether or not to grant this rezoning, it still should be considered as part of that vote and decision that all of you are going to make. And part of the consideration is, this is one of the five, it requires no change, that can be involved in your discussion, but it is just one harmonious petition that we want to avoid striking any items from. Just because there's no discussion though, because nothing's going to change with that particular parcel, doesn't mean we want to remove that. We want to keep this all together.
Hello?
Yeah, so I think one of the things that I would say about striking these and moving them separately is that when we look at the diagram, I have no idea exactly what parcel, the first one, what it entails. I'm looking at the whole entirety. I would move them all together.
I, I read it as one as well.
So we would like to just to discuss the whole proposal as one proposal?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, on page six of your packet, the different parcels are numbered. If you, if the commissioners need to reference those individual parcels, you may want to use that each.
The one on page seven, it's got the, the conditional zoning request?
The current zoning?
Number, page six.
Yeah, page six has the current zoning, yeah. And then it's talking about the, the vote for the whole package is on page seven, correct? That we're changing, the ones that we're arguing.
I move for the approval of rezoning request, RPZ 25-0002.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded into approve the zoning request for RPZ 25-002. Is there any more discussion that would like to take place?
Commissioner? Yes?
First of all, I want to thank the petitioner for the work that they've completed on this application. I think they were very thorough. We're not going to be able to please everyone, but I think we have made great strides at better understanding what we need to do as the petitioner because we're affiliated with BCU to move this forward. I just want to highlight a few comments that were made about the cannabis manufacturing facility. If you watch the past history of this planning commission, we've done our best not to approve cannabis for the last two and a half years. It doesn't mean that we are not going to be able to do that in the future. It depends on the petition and everything like that. Most, most of those applications are on the north side of Battle Creek. I hope that we will not see one in this area. I will say that. I also feel that there needs to be a continued discussion with the applicant about this piece of property because it is a valuable piece of property in, in Battle Creek. You look at the surrounding properties, they, but the development, and I think he's taken into consideration how we need to work together and that's very important. With that being said, I will support it. I also want to offer to Sam Richards that we have additional property in Fort Custer if you need additional development property. And that'll be it right now.
Okay. I would like to say thank you, BCU, for putting together a nice proposal like this. I hope the discussions keep going a little bit further to help with making it harmonious and, and in the neighborhood. And I think everything's been quite good at this point. I do, I am excited about getting more housing in. I don't think it will affect the housing rates too much or anything at all, more like improve. Or maybe, I mean, it's, it's light industrial, so you can get a lot of different types of businesses out there that aren't just like big construction, concrete-looking buildings and stuff. So a lot of areas I've traveled through lately, they've been very harmonious with getting housing around some smaller shipping centers or just light manufacturing for automotive parts, little, little things, nothing huge, where you'd have like lots of giant pickup or big trucks, more like pickup trucks, working and helping in the area, make sure that they fit well with the neighborhood concept. Thank you. Okay, any, go ahead and call a vote, please.
Commissioner Morris?
Favor.
Commissioner Dennison?
In favor.
Mayor Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Godfrey?
Yes.
And Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Okay, now the, the petition has passed and now I will hand it back over to our chairman.
All right, thank you all. We will move on to old business.
No old business.
Okay, new business?
No new business.
Comments by the public?
Any public?
Any, any comments by the remaining public? Seeing none, I will go to comments by staff and commission members.
Yes?
I was wondering, based on the comment of the people that live on Stone Jug Road, if the city could take, have the engineering department take a look of that intersection of Stone Jug and Columbia with the sweep to the, if they could, there, there are weather-affected mirrors that can be erected so that somebody stopping at that intersection off of Stone Jug Road could look up at the mirror and see the traffic coming around that bend on Columbia. It might prove beneficial to the residents that live in that area.
We, we will absolutely bring that to the Department of Public Works to have them take a look at it.
Thank you.
All right, I think we got staff taking notes, Ted taking notes, Mayor taking notes. Perfect. Any additional commissioner or staff comments?
I have, I have one too.
Yeah.
Around the sound study. And I'm curious if we actually have had a sound study in the area or will actually plan to do it. Because it may not be as simple as sound insulation, but at least understanding concerns of residents might be helpful.
So, so strictly from? So, so strictly from the city's standpoint as far as the ordinance is concerned, there's no requirement in the zoning ordinance that, that a sound study be conducted? But that would be up to, to either the applicant or any future potential developer?
Is there, there's, in the past, there has been work done in that area regarding that. Is there anything, like is that shared? Is there anything that people can refer back to or is there anything from that that can be?
We, we could take a look back. I'm not necessarily familiar with it, but I can, I would think somebody at Public Works would likely have access to that if a study of that nature was done, so we can take a look at that.
Perfect, thank you, all right.
Let me add there real quick, if I could. You know, obviously, we have done noise studies at the airport.
Yeah.
And that information is readily available. I think some of the issues that you heard today too might pertain more to whether or not, you know, a, a private operation was a sound nuisance, for example. And they would be subject, obviously, to the same ordinances and laws that any other, you know, business or even residential user would be in the city of Battle Creek.
Perfect, thank you, Ted. All right, any additional comments? All right, seeing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.